Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. This is a special meeting held by the Marquette Township Board. Today is August 10th, 2020 at 1:07 PM. We're just waiting for Trustee Marks to try to zoom in, but we're going to get going. Randy, if you want to do roll call, please.
Trustee Marks is excused for the moment. Trustee LaRue?
Here.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Treasurer Johnson?
Here.
Clerk Retary is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
So staff present is Manager Gerard and John Kengas, Superintendent of Public Works slash new manager. Roger Zap, our legal counsel is here, and our staff planner, Ryan Dietrichson is here. Committee members present is Mike Springer from Planning and Recreation and Roads.
Thank you very much. Any emails, Randy, for us to consider?
I will see here. I have none other than Mike's email that wants to show a few pictures.
Okay, cross that off, then we have no board member comment. So we can have approval of the agenda?
We approve the agenda.
So who made the motion? Okay, Peter did, and then who seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Roll call vote, but... John's coming over here, so I see him right now, so hold on. We'll do this roll call vote, and then we'll let John in, because I just see him pull in, so. Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee, or Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee, or Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Let's see here. Clerk Retary is yes, and Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero, and one absent. Okay.
You have to do something to let him in then, or?
Yeah, what? I'm just going to pause this meeting for a second.
And you're good?
Yep, we're good.
All right. I'm not aware of any conflicts of interest. So five, I guess it should be 5A, was considered possible millage language with, I put a question mark, by recreation. So at the board meeting last week, we had a discussion about whether to, which was triggered by the grant request, actually. It kind of trickled down to the idea of not having enough money to do some of the recreational items that we'd like to do, or the things that we need to keep up. So we called this special meeting to have a couple discussions about this. The idea is, and has been brought up before, that we ask the public if they'd be willing to have a millage supported by them to, and it's loosely just recreation. That's because we haven't talked about it in depth enough, which is why we're here, to see what that would entail, what kind of money we're talking about. And it's, it's good timing, right, but since we're in the budget discussion shortly. I did not look at them. Tell me, Mike Springer, do you have something on this topic, or is it the grant letter?
This topic. Yeah, I just have a couple images, a couple things to say, a public comment.
Just want to know where that fit, because I'm sorry I didn't look at it. It was just, I just got it. Okay, Manager G?
Lynn, just to clarify for the public that might be watching, how we got to this discussion is, the public may not realize that our operating revenues are limited to five mills. That is statutory. We cannot levy more than five mills for general operations of the township. The five mills is specifically targeted to those functions that we must perform by statute. Tax collection, property assessment, zoning, those kinds of things. Recreation and several other items that we do are desired by the public and desired by us, but they are not requirements for us. So the discussion got down to the point of, with our reducing revenues as a result of the dark stores issues, as well as the impact of COVID-19, that going forward in '21, '22, probably '23, the five mills will not be enough, and it's actually rolled back by headwinds to 4.8 something now, but will not be enough to allow us to function and provide those extra amenities without some additional support. And that's how the question of a millage for recreation came up.
Perfect, thank you. Mike, let's start with yours then. Let's see what you have.
Sure. Mr. Tari, Clerk Retary?
I will get that up here. Hold on one second.
Thank you.
Okay, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay.
Next slide. Can you make it a little bigger, please? I just, you know, basically, I want to thank the board for at least entertaining this idea of a millage. It's in our rec plan. Next slide, please.
Yeah, hold on one second, Mike. I'll do that here. Okay, I'll be back here. One second here. Hold on. And I'll make it bigger here.
Sure. This is the last page of our current rec plan. And you can see what it says about proposed future projects and maintenance to find funds. And so I'm thanking the board for moving ahead on this, or at least considering this. Next slide, please. In, in that rec plan, you'll see we have a history of being successful with grants. But all these grants require match money, as you know. And so, next slide, please. And this is... What you see here is a, an underpass that fortunately we found matches for. But we're not always going to be able to do that in the future. And also, as Mr. McCarthy has pointed out in the past, you know, it's, the township needs to have some skin in the game if we're going to continue to apply for grants. Next slide, please. This is the same slide you just saw. But Michigan, the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund grant, every year they offer these $50,000 or less grant projects that you can apply for. And basically, from what I've understand, is that they usually fund all of those. So that's another consideration. You know, sometimes it's just a little bit of money that we need to put forth to be able to improve what we already have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, my first question to Manager Gerard is, I guess, what's your thought? What, are you trying to cover payroll? Are you trying to cover specific things that need to be done at the parks? Are there other projects we're not doing that we should be, as far as the, or should be is a relative term? But what's, where are we with that?
Well, every time, every time the board or the planning commission has done a survey of residents about what it is that they want, it consistently has pointed towards leisure activities, whether it be parks, or trails, or ice rinks, or whatever. The residents basically are looking for a quality of life within the township. And that quality of life extends beyond collection of taxes and provision of fire services and, you know, the things that we typically do as a governmental unit, you know. The residents want to have water come out of their faucets when they turn on the, turn the faucet on. They want things to go away when they flush their toilet. They want the roads to be fixed. They want to write you things that make it a livable community. Beyond that, they want to be able to, in their leisure hours, enjoy the township as well. So historically, the township has made an attempt, wherever possible, to allocate funds through tight budgeting, quite frankly, you know, operating, operating the things we have to do at maximum efficiency to provide additional funds to do the things the residents want. We have, however, had to go out to talk to the residents about millages before. They said they wanted the roads fixed. The road commission owns the roads. They couldn't fix it, so we asked for a millage. They supported that. Actually, they've supported road millages three separate times. If you'll remember back, probably in the early 2000s, we initially started by doing a half dozen intersections in the, in the township, improving the intersections. That was on a millage vote. We did that in one year. We then went back to the residents and said, you know, we're hearing that Werner Street is in terrible condition, and Brookton Road is in terrible condition. We think we can fix that with a relatively small millage. They approved that. We did. We reconstructed Werner. We did it effectively or efficiently to the point where we had enough money left over from that levy to also fix Brookton Road. The most recent one was the product of the Roads Committee in the Planning Commission that created a millage question over 15 years, basically, that replaced and repaired all of their local roads in the township. We have never asked for a millage for recreation, which was the next thing that the residents wanted on their plate. We got grants and set aside out of the general fund, matching money for the grants to improve Lyons Field to the condition that it is today, to add the kiddie facility, the kiddie park facility, the climbing structure that we now have today, construct the ice rink that we now have today, instead of flooding the baseball field like we used to do. Those were all things we were able to do because of growth in our tax revenues. Then along comes the dark stores. So there was a huge reduction in our tax revenues as a result of the tax tribunal's dark store, which is the big boxes, basically, tax reductions that occurred. That then spread to the mini, mid-boxes, the Michaels and those size. Then it went down to some of the gas stations. It went down to some of the apartment processes. Long and the short of it is, over about the seven years, we've had a huge reduction in our taxable value in our tax collections. We're now at the point, because now of COVID as well, with the economy down and people not buying things, not paying sales tax, which is a major portion of our revenue sharing in the, in the formula from the state. We are facing a situation where we can barely provide the mandatory services we have to provide. For the 2021, '22, and '23 budgets, the board is going to be faced with, what can you do without to balance your budget to do the things that you must do by statute? Recreation is one of those items. The additional law enforcement that we provide is one of those items. There are several other things. We, we fund with a small millage, the Ironer Heritage Trail. That would be on the block for being cut. So those are the kinds of things that we were discussing at their last meeting about how can we continue to do the things the residents want, yet perform all of the functions that by statute and by, by the constitution, we must provide. That's where this discussion came from. So every time, and you've heard me say it year after year, every time there's a new grant for a new trail, or for safe routes to school, or whatever, I have always said that grant needs to include the cost of maintaining that new facility, that new structure that's being put into place. We've not done that. We've been able to cover that with our building and ground staff. As a result of budget restrictions, I've had to cut one of those positions in the 2021 budget. We're not going to fill it, so we're down to two instead of three, which makes it that much more difficult for us to maintain those trails, especially in the wintertime when people want to use them. So that's how we got here. And an answer, direct answer to your question, Supervisor Durant, when I talk about a recreation millage, I have in the general fund an entire department that is a recreation department. It covers the cost of the vehicles we use. It covers the cost of the staff, and it covers the cost of the supplies and materials that we have to have to maintain the ball field, maintain the ice rink, and all of the other amenities that we have, keep the parks open, those kinds of things, empty the trash. That's what I can no longer afford to do in 2021 without some additional revenue.
So what's that magic number? What are you thinking you need?
At this point, I'm, I'm going to leave that up to the board, because we, we, right now, I'm about... Just to put it into perspective, this year, had the tax tribunal not gone in the direction it went, I would have $100,000 more revenue coming in this year. That's gone. As it sits right now, we have about $50,000 flex in the 2001 budget, which is literally nothing in a multiple million budget. That's what we have to work with for the year, uncommitted, $50,000.
So the money we'd be looking for from the millage we're talking about?
I would, I would suggest to you, if you were asking me what I think it would take to continue to provide what we have right now in recreation, I'd say half a mil.
I knew you were going to say that. So again, that doesn't, that's not for anything new, correct?
That is to bolster what we are currently doing. That's not adding anything. That's, that's maintaining the level of recreational services that we're currently maintaining. Plowing the pathways in the wintertime, operating the equipment with the staff that I currently have, which would be two people, basically.
And if we do not do this, what happens?
If we don't do this, we're going to run out of money in the recreation fund about two-thirds of the way through the year.
Through next year?
Yep, in 2021, which will be spring.
So we would not have whatever plowing or maintaining trails, more than likely?
We would get through the winter pretty well, but when we get into the spring, when we're starting to talk about if, if the COVID requirements are lifted, and we're talking about having the JV baseball and the high school softball and all that, and Lyons Field, to continue to maintain those services will be short.
And this would be for 2022, then?
It would be for 2021.
Oh, so this year?
This year is going to be very, very tight, but, you know, to get a question on for this year is almost, I don't think we have enough time to get a question on for this year, but if we do, I would recommend doing it for the November ballot.
Okay, so, but that money that we could garner from the November election is going to cover spring of '21?
It would, it would bolster '21. It would be collected in the spring of '21, but would carry us through the year then.
Okay, so I have our timeframe right?
Correct. We would levy it in December, collect it in February, March, and then it would be there to cover the rest of the year.
Okay. Dave, you had your hand up first.
And you, John, then you.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that, if you put the millage together, is that a millage for 2021 then, or 2020?
It would be to levy in December of 2020 to collect in '21. Correct, Roger?
Correct. And I believe that you have a day that you're waiting, you're dealing with here. And while I've got the floor, just a reminder, I have a different Zoom meeting.
Right.
I have to leave in about 22 minutes.
Yeah, just the, the millage language would read 2020 then for the start.
Correct. And I circulated a sample resolution and ballot proposal with a couple of blanks in that.
Yep, I saw the blanks. I was just wondering what went in there.
Yeah, what would go in there would be for a December 2020 levy, collected in early '21.
I guess personally, I'd like to see it, us do a half a mil from 2020 through 2023.
So for the years 20, budget years 21, 22, and 23?
I don't want to get into all that, because it just gets confusing.
This is a two-year millage, two-year.
Say 2020 through 2023. So that'd be three years.
I would not recommend that because of elections. I'd only recommend a two-year.
Okay.
It would be for '21, '21, and '22 then would be the, the tax years.
Yes.
Well, let's hold it. You got to count that. If we levy this in December, that's 2020?
Correct.
21, 22, and 23. So that's a four-year millage if you go, if you label it as 2020 through 2023. Now, and that's going to actually bring money into the budget in '21 through '24, because you're levying in December, but you don't collect until the next year. So, but anyway, 2020 through '23 is a four-year millage, and that puts you back in a presidential prime...
Right, so they, actually...
Presidential election year, sorry.
What I'm understanding, Dave, with your motion, is that you want the money to be usable in '21 and '22?
Yeah, and it's not a motion at this stage. I'm just trying to clarify what years that would be for.
Yep.
And I'm guessing if it's a two-year millage, then it would be 2020 and 2021. Is that correct, Roger?
And it would cover '22?
A two-year millage would be a 20, 2020 and 2021, and it would be received in '21 and '22.
Okay.
The way millages have to be worded, that's just the weirdness of it.
John?
Yeah, you can, I got a microphone, John.
Every indication points to the fact that our township revenue income will continue to be depleted by action of the tax tribunal. Three more prospective losses can be anticipated. Our goal today for this meeting was an attempt at communicating to the, our taxpayers that we have limited areas in the budget that can be trimmed. Not wanting to reduce recreation, we need to ask for support of our taxpayers to have a millage that will accommodate the problem that we face. My argument that I'd like to present is that whatever millage we ask for, it should be enough to take us through the two-year period at least without having to come back and ask for more money. I personally would like to see the millage increase request be for one mil.
Okay, Dan?
I was going to ask Randy what it would take to put that third person back on, because I feel that with the workload that the staff has, that it's very, very difficult for the staff to get the work done, especially in the wintertime when we have back-to-back storms, and, and that's when we're going to have a lot of people complaining that things aren't, aren't getting done, or Lyons Field, or the ice rink, or this or that. So I, I feel that we should go back to the three-person staff that we had, and what would it take? Could, could that be done with .7 mills, or like John said, one mil? I, I'm not convinced that a half a mil is going to be enough.
Well, a half a mil is going to generate around, just over, right around $110,000 over the course of the, the year, roughly, judging based on what the, the law enforcement and the fire are generating. It's going to be around, the law enforcement's just short of $110,000 at .4 mills. So a half a mil, .5 will be just above that, not much. To replace, to replace that third position is, by the time you add everything into it, the salary, the salary of an entry level is going to be about, by the time you, you put overtime and all that attached to it, just short of $40,000 for that, but then when you add the benefits that, under the bargaining agreement, have to be applied, pumps that up to just about $61,500. That's the full cost of one position for a year. So that's why I said half a mil. Half a mil would give you that, plus about half again for expenses.
Randy?
Okay.
You also have to realize, there is, so, there is money in the budget already. It's just not sufficient enough to do what we want to do.
That's correct.
Whatever millage we put will be on top of that dollars that's already there, so.
That's correct. Yeah, I cut that, I cut that, I cut that position out of the '21 budget to save that money. Still trying to provide the service that we did, but again, we still don't know what revenue sharing is actually going to be for this year. Could be less than what we're anticipating. There's a, there's a revenue, revenue conference coming up, I believe it's next week? State Rev, the State Treasury Revenue Conference to give a new projection on what sale tax revenue is looking like for the year. I'm not, I'm not optimistic.
Randy?
Well, .6 generates $152,793. Would that be enough, Randy, with the existing money to probably refill that position and go forward, do you think?
I think it would actually be a little more than is necessary.
Well, that's okay.
But again, but again, we don't know what actual revenue sharing is going to be. I'm projecting about a $40,000 reduction in the revenue sharing from the state this year. So, you know, we've, we've got that in the budget. You know, that's what I have plugged in. If it's less than that, then I'm going to have to find the money somewhere else again. So, you know, I, I think, I think we could get by with a half a mil, certainly for '21. '22, as Dave mentioned, if you're talking about a multiple year, probably going to need a little more than half a mil.
Pete?
Why don't we consider three-quarters of a mil for two years?
Is that a motion, Pete?
I would make that motion, yeah.
I'll support that. So .7, .7 mills for, .75 mills for two years.
To be collected for '21 and '22.
Yeah.
I could support that also.
Okay, let's make sure, though, that... I want to make sure what would not happen if we don't do this. We're going to have, what, what will not happen? The ball field will not get taken care of next year?
Well, Lynn, for what I understand, the managers tell us, we'll get through the winter, but as we get to the spring, the money's going to run out, and we won't be able to do anything beyond that.
So we will not have money for the payroll or maintenance to do the ball field?
Next, next, next summer will be difficult to do what we've typically done in the summer with the maintaining of the kiddie park and the ball field and the trails in particular, because we're adding, you know, we're adding trails, you know. You got another trouble going across Schwemwood, you know, which is going to increase traffic there, which is going to increase maintenance demands at Schwemwood, you know. So, you know, all of those things are, are a cascading type of event for the limited staff that we have in building and grounds.
So the millage we're asking for is, for the most part, for another person?
Well, it's, it's, it's to provide for our ability to continue to provide the recreational services at the same level that we're currently providing them through 2021, and as Pete was now saying, at three-quarters of a mil, through 2022 as well. Otherwise, we're going to have to decide what we're going to offer and what we're not going to offer. You know, remember, the building and grounds folks are also the ones that maintain and, and oversee the rental of the community room. Now, this year, obviously, we haven't been doing that, but that's a significant draw, because it's all weekend hours. So mostly, it's overtime.
Well, we don't know when that'll come back either.
Well, that's what I say, you know, we're, we're operating kind of in the blind right now. You know, we're, we're trying to pitch a no-hitter with one hand behind us. And, and basically, we don't know what our actual revenue picture for '21 looks like. We don't even know if we're going to be allowed to continue to provide group activities in '21. As it sits right now, the governor has extended her, her executive order for the emergency declaration through September 4th already. I suspect very strongly that on September 3rd, she's going to put restrictions into place to ensure that Memorial Day doesn't have the kind of events that the Fourth of July had from a public safety standpoint.
Labor Day, you mean?
I meant, Labor Day is what I meant, September 7th. That's, I mean, that's the following month. I meant Labor Day is what I meant, uh, September 7th. That's, I mean, that's the following Monday. So why extend the emergency declaration through Friday when Monday is Labor Day? Uh, that's to get you to the point of being able to do something specifically for Labor Day.
So if for some reason this COVID thing continues and the governor keeps everything shut down next year, can we make sure that, you know, that's not gonna work? I mean, we can't even guarantee that that money's gonna be saved because we'll have had to hire that third person already.
Well, and, and that's, that's why I say everything is up in the air. That's, that's the reason I'm still sitting in this chair rather than being retired is because we're trying to figure all that kind of stuff out for what's gonna happen in 21. If COVID is still going forward, to a good point, we won't be usable. We won't be having the community room rentals. We won't be preparing the ball field. We won't be doing the ice rink this winter. We won't be doing hardly anything other than maintaining our pathways and trails, you know, just keeping those open in the winter time. And then we'll be fine. Not a problem. We can do that with the current budget. But if it's lifted and we start doing rentals of the community room, we start doing events, we start doing a lot of the things we've been doing like the ball field. We start having hockey games in the winter time. If we start doing all those kinds of things, the current 2021 revenue will not support that.
So if we find out by December when we would actually levy this, that none of this is gonna go forward.
Then you amend your budget. Then you don't levy the, you don't levy the millage.
Okay.
I mean, just because the question is passed does not require you to levy it. Uh, what, what we're, what this discussion is all about is what do we do at the 11th hour if everything changes?
Okay, and this is.
Have the ability to do something if we need to.
Just because we're asking doesn't mean the public's gonna agree. So we're assuming that they'll accept it.
And, and we've always taken that position with millage questions. The only time we did not take that position, well, let me back up. The first, the very first time we did it with the seven intersections, we came in under budget. So we did not levy the rest of the millage. On the second one where we redid Werner, um, we specifically put in the wording that anything that we were able to save on the Werner project, we would put towards the Brookton project and we were able to do that. We came in about $74,000 under budget on Werner by changing some of the, uh, some of the procedures that we took in the construction of the road. The contractor came back and said, if we can make these changes, we can do it for less. And we agreed to that. We took that $74,000 and put the resurface on Brookton Road, which has held up now for, ah, God, how long has it been? Eight years, nine years, I think it is? Uh, it's starting to wear now. I mean, you're, you're starting to see the edges breaking down. You're starting to see a lot of crack filling. So that was a, that was a really good investment. But just because the millage is passed doesn't ensure that we're gonna levy it. We only levy it if we actually need to. So I guess that, that's, that's the, the message I'm bringing to the board is if everything continues as it is today, the budget as we're projecting it for 2021 will cover what we need to do with about $50,000 extra to go into our general fund, fund balance. If COVID restrictions are lifted, we'll make it through the winter, but come next spring, we may not be able to continue to provide the things that we do at Lions Field Recreation Area and the trails. And we'll be short one building and ground staff.
Okay.
I, I know it's, 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 it's hard to wrap your arms around it and wrap your head around it, but we're trying to figure out with three hands out of our poker, our three cards out of our poker hand, what we're gonna bet.
Go ahead Pete.
Randy, when you, you're talking about cutting back one person from the, the grounds and that, if we have a bad winter, if we don't get a millage for recreation to take care of some of this stuff, we're not gonna have the, the roads plowed because they're, they're gonna have a hard time. We're trying to just keep up with the ice rink and taking care of offices and that. I don't, I think we should.
In that case, we would not be doing the ice rink. We would be concentrating on the pathways.
Okay, that's what I wanted you to say.
Yeah.
One thing is that our people here, we don't have a lot of recreation. I mean, we have a kiddie park, ice, but in the winter time, we don't, we have the ice rink and what? So we have.
The kiddie park is available in the winter time, but it's not very comfortable in this place. I mean, it's cold.
It's not hard to shovel that tube though.
Well, it is.
Saying that we have to offer something to our people because they've taken care of their roads and stuff like that. We don't have a lot of, we don't have the lake to worry about or stuff like that. We can't have parks on the lake or stuff like that. But we have to make sure that we provide the ice rink and things like that for recreation and also plow alongside the roads so that people can get out and walk. If this virus continues on, you have to give them events that they can do. So I think it's so important that we maintain and pass this, uh, three-quarters or even a miller, but whatever, but I just think we have to do that for our residents. They're paying for other things that they shouldn't be paying, but they deserve the ice rink and stuff like that in the winter time. And if we have a bad winter, you might not put that one less person, you might not be able to take care of that. And I don't think that's very unfair.
Well, that's true, you know, and, you know, what, what folks don't think about, you know, and I know there's folks out there that'll watch this and think, eh, you know, how much does it take to shovel a sidewalk? How much does it take to, you know, to have an ice rink? Well, what it takes is an awful lot of water, takes a lot of electricity. It takes a lot of, uh, utility type things that lighting at night, you know, all of those things go into the operation of recreation. It's not just the manpower and it's not just the equipment. It's everything else that it takes to make it work. The things you don't see, the utility costs, all of those things keep going. And, you know, those add on on top of everything else. Winter time, believe it or not, is a real busy time for us. You know, the community room is rented constantly all winter long. Uh, you know, we've got events going on and they're typically on weekends, which basically pulls our week staff, the people that work Monday through Friday into work on the weekends and that's all overtime. It's just, it's just the way we have to do it. But i- in answer to your question Pete, we would then have to prioritize, prioritize what it is that people use the most during the winter time. And mostly it's the pathways along the roads. It's mostly what people use.
Right.
Dan?
Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't there a lot of people that ride their bicycles in the winter time with the, with the fat tires and things like that? And so do they not go to maybe Schweman Park and need a place to park and, and then ride the trails from there?
Oh, it's increasing every year. John can speak to that more than I can because I'm not one of those riders, but we see it all the time. I mean, the fat bike, year-round, you're seeing people riding the fat bikes, especially in the winter time though, and the trails are very, very popular. Now, the, those trails, the NTN trails don't take a lot of maintenance for us, but you're right, people have to park somewhere and they have to get to them.
And that takes staff.
It, it does.
Bernie?
Looking at three-quarters of a mil will bring in approximately $180,000, somewhere in that vicinity and that.
I got 205.
You got 205. I got 182 something.
Based on what we've said.
I like Lynn's.
Well, it will be.
I like mine because it's closer.
Yeah, three-quarters of a mil will be closer to what the library, you know, library's getting 248 for, uh, you know, one mil, which is actually gonna be about point nine because of the rollback, the heavily rollback. But yeah, I, I think Lynn's is closer. It's gonna be, uh, three-quarters of a mil will be just over 200,000.
Now that's on top of what we've already got budgeted for it.
Right.
That's, that would be replacing the third position, putting the third position back and being able then to fund those other activities for the full year.
I think, I can't, I can't agree to that. That's way too much money.
Yeah, I think that's high.
We know that we can do this with a half. Let's not get greedy. If we make this.
If you did, if, if you did three-quarters of mil for one year, that would carry you through 22.
Right. Otherwise, a half mil would be enough. That would be would be, that would be, well, actually, you said Randy that you only needed about 60,000 for the employee side of it.
Correct. I, that's what I think. Half a mil would cover, one would cover 21. If you went three-quarters of a mil and we were, we were picky on 21, it would probably get us through 22 as well.
But half a mil is still gonna be somewhere around 112, 15,000.
Right. That, that covers the position and then there about $60,000 roughly.
Plus what we already have in there. I think.
Well, right now. Recreation is a part of building and grounds. They, they roll it together. On just, on just the recreation side of it, this year, we're gonna spend 53,435 just for recreation, the recreation portion of the building and grounds budget. So what I'm saying is, is that at half a mil, we could replace the currently vacant on one I eliminated this year. We could replace that for about 67,000 and then the balance would cover that recreation cost for the year.
Dave, go ahead. I'm gonna figure a half mil.
Yeah, that's, that's why I originally proposed a half a mil. I think it's a little easier for the residents to, uh, to consider and it covers our, the expenses, the sheriff's ball plus a little bit extra. So.
Correct.
That's why you do it for two years so you can, uh, get a look at how it goes. And if you wanna consider something more than that, and after that, that'd be, that'd be something else. But I think a half mil is a little easier for everybody to absorb.
I'll amend my motion if Pete will. Point five Pete?
Yes, I will.
Okay, so I agree to that.
Yeah, just so you know, the built, the, the, the total building and grounds budget for building and grounds and recreation is 205,000 a year. So that's why I suggested half a mil. Half a mil would cover replacing that one position and then another roughly 50 to 55,000 to cover the recreation costs.
So that 105,000 dollars would include putting that third person back in?
Yes.
Okay.
So a half a mil is 137.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So take six, take 67 off of that.
Yeah.
And that leaves you just over 60,000 left.
Plus you also got your current budget too.
Right.
Yeah.
Already.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying. The total, total budget right now breaks out 53,425, but that 53,425 is only a piece of that third position. It's building and grounds and recreation, that third position.
Well, I wouldn't want to go over a half.
No, I, I, I think a half would, would be fine for 21.
And that's two years or what? You wanna try to do?
That would be for 21, but hopefully by the end of 21, by budget cycle of 2021, starting the 22 budget, you're gonna know where you're at with COVID and with the tax tribunal.
So it would be a two-year, 20 and 21?
No, I would levy it just, I would suggest levying a half a mil for one year.
One year, okay.
Which would be, which would be collected in 21.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see the motion for two years for 2020 and 2021. Um, and then we could consider it if we wanna move it ahead and, and, and do it again. It's, it's a, uh, another election year, so we can move it ahead that way. If we do it for one year, we're, we're at a special election if we wanna keep it going.
Yeah, that's true. Randy?
Yeah, and what the manager reminded us is if we are in good shape at the end of 21, which we probably will not be, we don't have to levy it. Remember that.
Correct.
So we should just leave ourselves some flexibility to make sure it's levied if we need it.
So what, uh, what's our motion? What are we?
Motion is, is to levy point five mills for two years, which will be collected in 20 for 21 and 22. And let me hold on here one second. That, that will be the resolution and you'll just insert the, uh, point five. And then I'll get the, uh, get the money from the manager, from Dulce. And, um, the ballot language will be similar to that. It's, the ballot language, let me get that up here, would be. Uh, let's see here.
And levy it in 20 and 21 for collection in 21, 22.
Yes.
And, and that needs to be in, uh, by tomorrow, right?
It does.
Right, which is why we called this meeting.
Okay, so this is what the ballot language would look like, what the residents would see. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
So that's what you're basically voting on. The resolution, uh, will make this go to the November ballot, which, um, which the, the motion we're basically making right now will, will do that. You're approving the resolution for, um, the 2020 ballot. And, um, the purpose of the, uh, millage will be for public recreational activities, opportunity and facilities for township residents.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Um, real briefly, that purpose was just generic language that I invented. So you would add, have a potential resolution to look at. You can change that purpose if you wanna be more specific or more broad, more general.
Well, I think, I think you do, I think you do need to amend it to include the staff, staffing.
And, and I cannot stay any longer. I'm already kind of overstepped. I've, I've gotta run here. I will touch base with the clerk on what you decided on this, but, um, I'm leaving, so.
Roger, do you have anything that we need to know about the next topic on the agenda?
It's on hold basically because you're going to have all-in-kind as I understand it. And the manager can, John Kangas can address that. I really gotta go, so, hey, thank you.
Thanks Roger.
Okay, so our legal counsel, I would like to keep it more broad because then you don't, you're not zeroed in on things. Because remember, whatever goes to the residents, if it's very specific, you're stuck with it.
So we could pass this motion authorizing this resolution and the proposed ballot language with review by legal so that we make sure we have the wording, or do we wanna have it specific right now?
Uh, well, I can check with Roger, but, um, if you wanna include the staffing, I can make that happen. Make sure it includes the staffing.
I just think the public needs to know that it would include keeping the, the staffing level.
And that, modify it and add staffing to it.
Yeah, we can do that.
As long as the board's all right with that, we can kind of be general for right now until we, um, talk to Roger. We know what these.
It has to be in tomorrow.
It does, so.
The, the, the motion to include staffing if.
That's fine. I can make sure it's written on here.
Okay.
Say, and, and include staffing for facilities for township residents.
Yeah, you could just say provide public rec facilities, opportunities.
And staffing for facilities.
Yeah. Okay.
And that covers the staff.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
So I will, I will change that if the motion is approved.
Call a motion?
Go ahead, real call.
So the motion will be is to levy a point five mil for two years to be collected in 20 for 21 and 20. Then it'll be collected in 21 again for 22. And I'll get that figure, but it's gonna be what? About 239,000 Lynn, somewhere in there? I'll have a specific figure.
137, 332, 50.
Okay, and that, yeah, and that will be for two years. So the motion, that's what the motion is for, to approve that resolution for that. And trustee Larue?
Yes.
Clerk Ratais, yes. Trustee Mark?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Emotion carries seven, zero. So I will get that set up and drafted and I will provide everyone with a copy of the adjusted, uh, figures and ballot language by tomorrow before it goes to the county.
Okay.
You ready?
Okay. Next up is the legal update on non-point source grant letter of intent. Who wants to? John, apparently. John and Mike. Who wants to? John, apparently John and Michael have an update for us first? One or the other?
Don't everybody jump in at once.
Yeah, I hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, John. Yeah.
Okay, my internet connection has been off and on, but also for the record, Lenny is in the room with me. That's why I'm in the uh, conference room, just so we can project it on the screen and he can uh, stay in the loop, given that he is, at least for the moment, the projected interim superintendent of public works. So the form that we need to finish filling out is what you see on the screen. It's the notice of intent and it's basically just a two-page form. All of the language and numbers are the same as before. Excuse me, the only difference is um, as we were going through the remainder of our our public works budgets late last week, I remembered that the township already has some skin in the game on the Ontario Phase Two project in that we are purchasing sanitary manhole castings and fire hydrants for the contractor to install when they reconstruct Ontario Phase Two. The total cost of those purchases exceed the $5,000 grant commitment that um, the partnership had recommended we agree to. So if the township board is willing to continue with this notice of intent, um, which we have to decide on today, otherwise there would be another special meeting before the next regular meeting next week, uh, we don't really have time because it's Friday, that that this notice of intent is due. We believe, based on my conversation with Carl Lindquist, is the amount that we've already committed through our water and sewer funds through in the 20 and 20, 2021 budget that you have not seen yet, that we will have our local $5,000 match covered. So um, we're hoping that the board will be in agreement that submitting the notice of intent with those funds committed as our local match is adequate um, to move forward. And of course, this is the notice of intent, which means if they select it, then we would go on to the formal proposal, which is a full-blown um, application for funding.
Anybody have a preference?
Seems like a no-brainer.
Questions?
Yeah, I've got one, Lynn.
Sure, go ahead, Dave. Can't see you.
Wasn't part of our uh, this whole process is that the last time we looked at this, it was pending legal review? Have they reviewed it yet?
He did review it and the last time I did talk to uh, attorneys at Apple was Friday afternoon. He questioned whether or not those um, utility funds could be used as actual match and um, based on what Carl suggested, he thinks that's exactly the type of in-kind um, matches that grants like this look for. So um, it's not applying to the same portion of the project, which is Ontario Phase Two and the downstream drainage structures. So um, I think that was really his only concern is whether or not that funding could be used. That being said, uh, it's too bad we didn't get him um, didn't have him available still for this portion of the agenda, but I think when I talked to him Friday afternoon, that was the one concern that he had expressed and we believe at least moving forward with that as our intended match.
So do we have a, what are the chances they could come back and say, this is not going to work? We still don't have a fallback then, right? We'd still have to come up with 5,000? Or a part of 5,000?
Correct. As far as I know, without the township having some sort of local match involved, the uh, scoring will not be in our favor.
We know that we can do some kind of in-kind.
Yeah, and I I think the water and sewer costs amount to about 8,500 plus or minus change. That's a conservative budget number, so maybe a little bit less, but definitely over 5,000. And uh, we base that off of actual budgetary quotes from our suppliers. So we know the numbers are solid for 2021. And we will be asking for current pricing before we purchase them. The only the only issue is if Eagle comes back and says that's not a qualifying match, then we would be back to the drawing board. Uh, that being said, if Eagle comes back and says it's a good notice of intent, you need a different commitment of 5,000, we'd be probably be coming back to you with uh, other recommendations and of course, Randy might not be here anymore when that happens, but I will hopefully have a pretty good idea of where next year's budget stands aside from any potential impacts due to uh, the proposed millage you just um, finished.
Lynn, this is Dave.
Okay, can I can we have the whole screen back, Randy, please?
Uh, yeah, John's got to stop sharing the screen. So if you want to stop doing that, John.
I thought it was yours, sorry. Just so I can see everybody. That way, if Dave's had his hand up, I didn't know it. Go ahead.
Um, I guess I'm wondering, doesn't we have any action that we need to take today, or do we need to? Because the last motion was to move it forward pending legal review, and if legal review is done, then it just moves forward, or is that a manager Gerard question?
Got his hand up. He must have the answer.
Guess he has an opinion.
The the issue that you were seeking a legal opinion on was the expenditure of township $5,000. That's what Roger was reviewing. The reason Roger was reviewing it and the reason I became the fly in the ointment with the question that I raised is because the Public Improvements Act does not allow you to spend general revenue dollars on a project that serves private property. That has to be done by a special assessment of the property owners that benefit from the project. Roger agreed with that. That is what it says. So the question is, we tried to come up with alternative way to come up with the $5,000 and John came up with the the suggestion about, wait a minute, we've already got money invested in the road commission's project. Can that be used as match? That's non-general revenue money. So that was what Roger responded to, saying, yeah, let's take a look at it. John ran it past Eagle. Eagle so far, well, I'm sorry, Carl is saying that 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 should be approvable. If Eagle does not approve that, then you would have to figure out where you would get $5,000 that would not be coming out of general tax collect revenue. And that's where we've had several ideas. Uh, as a, for instance, the the stormwater ordinance, as you know, has a fee attached to that, an administrative fee that is not generated by taxes. That fee could be used towards the $5,000 or to satisfy the $5,000. So if Eagle comes back and says, no, what you're proposing as an in-kind is not acceptable, you do have some alternatives to come up with the $5,000, up to and including all the hands that raised last time, saying, I'll give 500. So that that's the bottom, you know, in the bottom line, the reason that it came up is because the Township Improvements Act specifically says that those kinds of improvements must be done by special assessment of the benefiting properties. Now, even though, and that's why I asked Roger at the end of the discussion, could that be, could that stream be classified as utility? If so, the Metro Act is available. Uh, and I think it's a long stretch to be a utility, but along those same lines, there could be other places to get a total of $5,000 that would not come from general tax revenues.
So how about the in-kind being calculated on staff time and even Mike Springer's time as volunteer input? I'm sure he could come up with some kind of hourly, you know, I I've spent eight hours on this or 10 hours or something. That's an in-kind, too.
Well, but they want to see, you know, as John mentioned, they want to see township skin in the game. Okay, so what what John is talking about is the money that we have uh, already committed to the project through the road commission is township money. It's coming out of the utility funds, not out of the general funds.
So they don't care where it comes from?
They don't care where it comes from, as long as it's that match. So that's why, that's why Carl is hopeful that that will resolve the issue. Because it is cash. It's a cash contribution we're making to the road commission for the project.
Um, I think Dave and Ernie had your hands up. Dave?
Yeah, I guess my back to my original question, we seem we've we've pretty much resolved that there is the money there by through one means or another. So my question is, is to move this forward, do we actually need another motion?
No.
Is it?
You already had the motion to move it forward pending legal and Roger's legal opinion is, given the current circumstance, he doesn't need to issue one. So it's just an update. This is just an update.
And my question is that we don't need to take any action today. It's just we're already good to go.
I would say so. I'd say that they're ready to submit the notice of intent. Do you agree, John?
I would say, and then the only other thing is authorizing the uh, supervisor to sign or be the uh, person in charge on that form. It's one of the blanks, um.
Nope, you're muted.
You got muted, John.
I guess what I'm wondering is being how he's muted and he can't hear him anyway, should we should we redo the motion uh, again? To make sure we've got the rest of that covered?
John's back now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only the only other thing is uh, on that form, we have a couple of blanks and basically it's the contact person. Um, I don't know that the contact person is necessarily signing anything. It could be on at this point anybody, but coming from the highest um, authority of the township is probably the best bet to show our true commitment.
That's fine. Otherwise, I would say you because you're going to be involved with it if Randy's not here. As far as a contact person, the signing part's not always the same.
Right.
I guess the only thing I would say as far as a motion is just designate someone to sign the form. We've already approved it.
Do you do you have the motion, Randy, that you could read what was passed the last time?
I do, I do. The motion that was passed last time was to approve the notice of intent for the non-point source program with a $5,000 commitment from the township pending legal review on township obligations and spending restrictions.
Well, how about if we made the same motion and tagged on the the signature requirements at the end of it?
That's fine. If you want to do that again, that's fine. You want to make that motion, Dave?
Sure.
Ernie, you have a question?
Just one thing. If if Shove comes to push at the end and they don't accept what we're proposing, we'll have another opportunity to make a decision. We want to go forward or not?
Yeah.
At that point in time, so.
Right.
Full-blown proposal. Pete?
I think the thing is very important that we move this project on. When we were discussing last time, I heard that Granny said people said they'd help donate uh, money for towards it. We have in-kind, more in-kind help. And hell, we can have a can drive that raises $8,000. I mean, some of the organizations have been having can drive. We can end up with 5,000 to 8,000. It's a can drive. So I think it's so important that we go ahead and do this and we'll come up with the money, I mean, the in-kind help.
Just just order there. I think we got a motion on the floor without a second.
No, Pete.
Did he second it?
Yes.
Okay.
He did. Go ahead, Randy. You were gonna say something.
Oh, I was just gonna say that I think, you know, staff-wise, I think we're pretty confident that we can through our uh, some of our administrative fees that we get for some of our other programs can come up with the money to cover that.
Okay. Anything else? Go ahead, Randy.
Okay, so the motion will be is to approve the notice of intent for the non-source, non, non-point source program with a $5,000 commitment from the township pending legal review and township obligations and spending restrictions and allow the supervisor to sign the letter of intent. And trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Larue?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Iverson? Uh, didn't hear you, Dan. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
Clerk Retires, yes. And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
And that motion is approved seven zero.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Anything, Mike?
Nothing on my email, Lynn. Nothing on the email here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank the board. Uh, you just moved on to things that were proactive and are gonna help with the quality of life in our township. And even if it's just maintaining the quality of uh, our recreation services that we offer, let's step in the right direction and thank you for doing that.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate your uh, input and your slides. Anything else? Okay, any board member comment? Somebody's got a comment. Come on.
Did we do the motion review yet?
Nope, that's. Go ahead, Randy. You can review motions.
Hey, the motions to review are approve the agenda as presented, which was passed six, zero and one because John Marks wasn't here at the time. That was approved. Uh, the second motion was to approve a point five mils for recreation for two years and that was approved, the resolution and the ballot language. Uh, the third motion was to approve the uh, letter of intent for the non-point source program and that was approved seven zero.
Okay. I just need one more motion then.
I move to adjourn.
I should report.
Okay, roll call again.
Uh, clerk retires, yes. Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Larue?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
No, because I gotta think of a better way to spend my afternoon.
All right. Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries six and one.
I have 2:16.
2:16 PM. And I will take the recording off and have a nice afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.